If I could get everybody to find a seat, we'll get this council meeting starting. It's now September 3rd, 2013. We're gathered here in the City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street at Granbury, Texas. The council meeting is now in order. I'd like to invite my friend, Mr. Tony Allen, to leave us our invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I'd like to read an official proclamation. This is a resolution recognizing September as the Leukemia, Lymphoma, and the Melioma Awareness Month. Whereas blood cancer currently affects more than 1 million people in the United States with an estimated 148,040 new cases diagnosed each year, and whereas leukemia, lymphoma, and melioma has killed an estimated 54,380 people in the United States this year, and whereas leukemia and lymphoma socio, LLS, through volunteer contributions is dedicated to finding cures for these diseases through research efforts and the support of those that suffer from them, and whereas LLS maintains an office in North Texas to support patients with these diseases and their family members in the state of Texas, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of Granbury joins with LLS in designating the month of September 2013 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month to enhance the understanding of blood-related cancers and to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support education programs and the funding of research programs to find a cure for them. Thank you. At this time, the City Council will conduct its open mic. As you know, the City Council will provide an opportunity for citizens to present the concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on a posted meeting agenda during an open microphone period. The person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to which be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at any one time, and only that person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual council members or staff. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and City Manager if requested. The Council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. Our first speaker tonight is Judy McHugh. Did I pronounce that right, Judy?
Yeah.
I always tear it up. Okay. I apologize.
My name is Judy McHugh. I live at 702 Old Cleburne Road, Granbury, Texas, 76048. And I'm here tonight to add my support to the approval of City Manager Wayne McKethen's contract. A reliable source informed me that Wayne received excellent reviews in his recent evaluation, and I can see why. This has been a challenging year with many changes. Time does not allow me to elaborate, but most recently, we embarked on a coalition between Lake Granbury Waterfront Owners Association, the City of Granbury, Hood County, and Haynes and Boone Legal Team to prevent further abuse and misuse of Lake Granbury. Wayne has proven he has what it takes to move our city forward. Let us keep that momentum going. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Judy McHugh, citizen, neighbor, friend, and Vice President of Lake Granbury Waterfront Owners Association.
Our next speaker will be Tom Baker. How about that, Tom?
(laughing) Clap before he starts. Hi, I'm Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. My comments tonight are about the concert that we had on the square last Saturday night. I hear we're going to have more of them even this year and starting earlier next year, but 6 o'clock was a little too early to start them this past Saturday night. It was a little bit warm, but 9 o'clock was a little bit early to conclude it also, but I think it was a good effort to bring something on the square that we really haven't had that much of. We tried a few other times this past summer with other entities. First National Bank did it last year, and it was a good start there. I think with Mitchell getting behind it, we'll have some other ideas coming up with how to expand it and have more than just hot dogs and free sodas from HEB and Brookshire and such, but it was a good start, and I think the 200, 300 people there had a good time, and we need to continue it on. It was a very cheap form of entertainment and community effort and community being brought together, and even the few merchants that stayed open really appreciated it because they actually did some business between 8:30 and 9 o'clock at night, and those that weren't open, I mean, it was their own fault for not being there. They had the opportunity, but they didn't take advantage of it, so we need to expand this further into this year and starting earlier next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Our next item, we'll move into the consent agenda. Council, you've had an opportunity to read over these consent agenda items. I'll go ahead and real quick here. The approval of the council minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th, 2013. Consider the adoption of a resolution amending Resolution Number 13-11 and Resolution Number 13-12, providing for dates and times for extended early voting in the City of Granbury general and special elections to be held in November 5th, 2013, and also to consider and adopt a resolution providing for appointment of judges and alternates and respective polling place locations for the City of Granbury general election and the special elections to be held on November 5th, 2013. The Number Two item's got two parts there, which is to consider and approve an interlocal cooperation agreement for economic development for the fiscal year 2013-2014 between the City of Granbury and Hood County, and this consider and adoption of a resolution whereby the city and the county agree to appropriate $100,000 each for administration of economic development program for a period of one year through September 30th, 2014. Council, is there any discussion concerning the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Perkel. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those consent agendas are approved. We will now move into the deliberation agenda. The first one being a three-part agenda item is conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed City of Granbury fiscal year 2013. I'm going to go ahead and read all three of these off, and then we're going to call upon Abigail Gregory to come up here. But the first one is conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed City of Granbury fiscal year 2013-2014 budget, the second being consider and approve an ordinance providing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget, and the third being the ratification of property tax increase reflected in this budget. Do you want to get up and speak on that a little bit? Council, as you know, we reviewed these at our budget review, and so a lot of the information there, you're seeing again.
Yes, Mayor Protem, Council, City Manager, as you have in front of you the agenda for the budget, you also have received a budget reconciliation, a proposed budget projection analysis, and a transportation analysis. The only change we have made since August 6th, as proposed by the Council, we had changed the tax rate, and we had reduced it to the effective tax rate as calculated by the Chief Appraisal. So we had reduced it from .39926 to .394593, which the impact for the budget was $46,000. Right now, I'm following this sheet we had presented to you. It's in your packet. The other change we had made on the general fund side was the adjustment for a salary adjustment in the amount of $111,729, and we have also reduced the utility fund transfer from utility fund to general fund by $41,000. So the new impact, the surplus the general fund is showing is $24,168. Going forward to the utility fund reconciliation, the only change you have seen, you are able to see highlighted is... Go back one. One more. I do?
Okay.
This is the projection, the budget reconciliation for general fund, utility fund, the tourism fund, and the airport fund. This is the same analysis what you have seen at the budget retreat, and we also have included the reconciliation, what we have done since the workshop, and those are the sheets I was just referring to, the reconciliation for the general fund and the utility fund. The only changes we have made is highlighted in green, and the new surplus for the general fund is $24,000, and the utility fund is $84,000. And again, the only adjustments we have made is reduce the tax rate to the effective tax rate, which was the $46,000 impact, and we had made some salary adjustments based on the changes since the budget retreat, or since August 6th. The next analysis we had included in your packet as we have talked to you during the budget retreat, we were going to give you a little overview on the square transportation. Currently, we have a trolley that is costing the city about $95,000, $9,500, I'm sorry, during the year in maintenance, and what we have done, we had included renting of a van for about, it's averaging $9,600 a year. That will reduce the maintenance cost by $6,000, and the total impact for the budget would be $3,600. We have also included in the budget a tram, purchase price of $28,000, and additional $10,000 towards the cost of a mule that would be pulling the tram, and we estimated, at this time, we are not sure about the toll recovery we can get for the trolley, but we estimate it to be around $5,000, which is a very safe estimate, and the impact on the budget will be $34,000. These are the van, the renting of the van, and the tram is included in the budget already, in the budgeted numbers that you have in front of you.
Thank you. I will now open it up to the public, since this is a public hearing here. I've got one gentleman out there, David Sutherland, wishes to speak.
Thank you. I'm David Sutherland. I live at 226 East Pearl Street in Granbury, in the city limits. I had a few comments about some of the sections of the budget. Let's start on page 42, which is the City Manager's budget, which I think is a good budget and should reflect his excellent summary that he got from the Council, and I believe does include a raise, and I think that's well warranted. And then if we'll move on to page 47, that's the City Secretary, and I also, as you know, or may know, under open public request for information, obtained the City Secretary's salary and the acting City Finance Director's salary, who are both women, and I looked at also the salaries of the other department heads, who are all men, I believe, and I believe those two positions are substantially underpaid in relation to the men who are department heads. And then if you'll move on to page 49, the legal expenditures, there are some extra legal expenditures in there that are uncategorized, I believe, for... Let me turn to that page. For $40,000 and $20,000 and $40,000 in just legal expenses that are uncategorized... Oh, sorry. Sorry. They're uncategorized for $20,000 and $40,000 in addition to the normal expenditure for the City Attorney, and I assume that those are going to be expended on the legal battle against the B.R.A., and I'm not sure that that's enough money in next year's budget to adequately deal with that battle, which is, in my mind, the most important thing the city's doing right now. And then, thirdly, if you'll turn to page 52... No, no, I'm sorry, I already covered that. Let's turn to page 24. In your sales tax expectations, over the... Sorry, I'm moving away from the microphone. If you look at the current fiscal year, it was about less than a half percent increase in sales tax, but we're projecting in the next fiscal year a 6% increase in sales tax. Respectively, that's $41,000 from '12 to '13, and $488,000, more than 10 times as much, from '13 to '14 in the sales tax revenue. And I guess I had a question about how we think that's warranted in terms of if we have those kinds of economic indicators or if that's being done. I just want to be sure that you're not overestimating the amount of sales tax that might be coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutherland. Is anybody else out in the public who'd like to speak on these items? With that, council?
Mayor, I've got a couple.
Close the public hearing and open it up for the council here. Councilman Allen?
I'd like to add a few items to the budget and also discuss one item that was in the budget. First of all, I thank each and every one of the police officers, ladies and men that came tonight. You know, I've been a citizen of Granbury now for about seven and a half years. Never been in politics until I got up here on the council about three years ago. I took for granted that our officers had insurance if something happened to them. God forbid, we hope it never happens again. I got an opportunity to meet the officer, the deputy, once or twice, I think it's two times. I didn't know Officer Davis. I went to hospital to see him, and I asked Wayne how much insurance we had for him. We had none, and I think as citizens and as a council, we ought to take out a term insurance on these individuals. I know the city has checked on it. The way I understand it from Keith, it's around $25,000 a year. It depends on their age, it depends on their health conditions, but that could buy up to a million dollars' worth of insurance. The deputy lost his wife, or lost his life, and his wife has two children, and I think they got somewhere from the state around $186,000. That may be more or less, that's just a number I heard. But we got a big budget here, and we spend a lot of money. Sometimes I wonder if where we're going to get it, but I think that we deserve, or we should pay the officers insurance for life. I think they deserve it. They protect us. We hope we never have to use not one of these policies, but I'd like to add it to the budget this year, up to $25,000. The second deal I got, we passed a drug test for all of our employees about three months ago. I had several employees ask me, "Why don't y'all take one?" I asked that night, did it include the council, and our attorney told me it did not. Checking with TML, Texas Minnesota League, they said I could put it on the agenda, put it as a budget item, and if I'm wrong here, y'all correct me, but I think we could do up to two tests a year for ourselves, for the council, and it costs less than $1,000. I think that we should set the sample for our employees and our citizens of this town, and I'd like to add it to our agenda. Thirdly, I had an open record pulled on our travel expenses. We got, last year was $30,000 budget to travel. We got one councilperson that used 49% of it. Mine was 12%.
Councilman, you're talking about the council's travel?
Travel expense, and it's in our budget.
Okay.
Mr. Hewlett spent 18%. This is back in 2012, I'm sorry, 2011, 2012. Mr. Parshall, Mickey spent 39%, Laurel spent 1%, Ms. Tyra spent 12%. Ms. Tyra spent 18%, I'm sorry. Ricky Pratt spent 12. Moving forward to this year, which is not even over with yet, I have spent 14%. Gary Couch, which came on in November, has spent 11%. Mr. Hewlett spent 15%. Mr. Parshall spent 49%, Ricky Pratt spent 3%. What I'm getting at, we went from 39% to 49%. I think that we should do like the county and elected officials, we got a budget of $30,000 for travel. I think that what we should do there is divide that among all of us up here, and that would give us the $5,000 apiece for travel. Not 10, not 12, but 5,000. This is not money to go on vacation on or take trips on, so I'd like to put that in the form of a motion also that we go to 5,000 for each one. If we've got anything left over, it goes back into general funds, and if we go over, then it comes for council for approval, or we just take off and go somewhere. The fourth and last item was a fire truck. We had bids on three different fire trucks. One of them was 70-something thousand higher, and a phone call was made during our budget, and that came down 30,000, which still made it 40. It was voted on to put that in the budget. After talking with several people that's in the fire department, that's been in the fire department, been chief of police or chief of firemen, you got the same warranty. You got 20 years. You got the same pumps, you got the same tanks, you got everything's the same. I can't see spending $40,000 of taxpayers' money for that truck, so I'd like to see us to go back to the one that we recently voted on to start with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. See, what I'm going to do, I'm going to open each one of these items up for discussion, if the council may. We'll start with the term insurance, or does anybody have any other items they want to add to the conduct of public hearing regarding the proposed City of Granbury fiscal year budget? Okay, so let's take each one of these here. The term insurance. Council, do you have any thoughts on that or any rejection to that?
I like that idea.
It'd be money well spent.
Okay.
Is there no term law included in the health plan?
We'd have to...
What would be the base value of the policy?
A million dollars. We have worked with New York Life Insurance, and they basically have, it all depends on the age. You know, $25,000 was the initial investment. They've come back and said, depending on smokers, non-smokers, and age, it's a bit drastic.
I agree with, in light of what's happened, I think that's kind of opened our eyes up to something like that. That's not a bad piece of money to spend or something like that. I think we all agree with that. Next one would be the council drug testing for council. Any discussion on that, council?
I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem. I do have a concern about that being mandatory or random. Our city employees get random, right? Right, Wayne? So we would fall right in line with that?
Well, the figure I got was that it'd be under $1,000 if we did it twice a year.
So we will...
It would be random twice a year. We'd never know when they're going to call us and tell us to come up here and do it, so I would like to stick with the two times a year.
Okay. I don't have a problem.
If everybody's in favor of that.
So how does that work, Mr. Laurie? Were they elected by people?
I think that what you can do is appropriate money in your budget for that. Before you can implement that policy, you have to have a resolution and put it on an agenda.
Say it again.
I don't think you can create that policy without a resolution to create that kind of policy, and you don't have it on an agenda to create that policy tonight. So if you want to appropriate money in your budget, you know, to cover the expense of that, fine, that's budgetary, but then we'll have to follow it up later with a resolution.
Okay. I'll go for putting it in the budget tonight, and I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So what would you be doing, Councilman Allen? We'll be appropriating money tonight for that particular cause, and then we'd do a resolution in a later date, right?
I would put it on the next meeting.
Okay. Our next item there was the travel expenditures. Council?
Well, I don't necessarily agree with the rationale behind that. There's going to be, for instance, there's two members on the waterfront lake issue that will probably be traveling to Austin much more than the other council members, so it would be obvious that they're going to have a higher travel expense incurred. And don't we already have policies relating to travel?
We do out of state.
We set a policy earlier this year, I think it was, about no travel out of state unless approved by the council, and I think what Councilman Allen is trying to initiate here is a budget and breaking that down per person, and if they decide that if it looks like they're going to go over their budget, then it will come back to the council in the form of, okay, I need more money in my council to do extended travel. And you're right, there's some people, like, for instance, you know, the mayor protem on the city council probably does a little more traveling than just a city council. The mayor probably does a little more traveling than just a councilperson, but given that item there, we could probably look at it later on, and if that runs, you know, if that runs true, then possibly those types of people might get a different budget, but I think if we start out with a split budget, and once those people get over that, then we have the opportunity to look at it and say, okay, this person traveled here, 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 and here for what, for what, for what, for what, and then we decide, okay, was we abusing the system, or was we really needing to go to these things?
Mayor, I went down to Austin three times in the last three months, and two times I hitched a ride with the county, and I didn't turn any expense on either one of those. Last time I went down there, I hitched a ride with Wayne, and I got a $30 meal, a pretty meal, woman. I think if, I know you and Mickey are on that committee and proud of it, but I think if that comes up, y'all can ride together and save the taxpayers' money.
One thing I need to say is because with the possibility of us trying to eventually start a water plant, we're going to have to do some bond sales, and we may have to go out of state to do some of those bond sales. This is something that we'll probably have to bring back as a figure, because, you know, we may have to go to New York. I don't want to go to New York. I've been there once after 9/11. I mean, I was there... I was there two weeks after they bombed everything, and I don't want to go back. But somebody's gonna have to go back, go get some bonds. We've gotta have money.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm, Mr. Allen's complaining, I, I'm not following the logic for this.
Well, the logic is that I spent two thousand bucks. Mr. Hewlett spent twenty-four hundred. This, this year. Mr. Parcell spent seventy-three hundred. Mr. Perkel spent four and a quarter. Ricky spent eleven hundred dollars. That was, uh, two thousand twelve and thirteen. If you go back to eleven and twelve, I spent thirty-six hundred. Mr. Hewlett spent forty-eight. Mr. Parcell spent ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Ricky Pratt spent thirty-one sixty-two. And Mr. Tyra spent forty-nine hundred. We've got spending almost twice as much, one councilperson, as any other one. And this year, almost as much as all of us put together. And may have good reasons for that, I don't know. I know the county budget goes by. Each one has a certain amount of money they can spend. We're saying, we're not saying quit traveling, we're not saying that. We're just saying that when your budget runs out, it comes back to us. Is that fair?
Yep.
May, the council needs, does know that I represent, uh, the city of Granbury, uh, in a program called Texas Twenty-One. There are Austin, there are quarterly meetings in Austin, and then a manual conference in Irving for that. That's a portion of my expenditures. Uh, if you want to go to capping at five thousand, I'm okay with that, I don't have a problem with that. But we'll be bringing, but, but I'm assuming we'll be bringing this back up more often, and that'll be fine, because then you'll, we'll be able to put it in front of people and justify it. Uh, I think every expenditure I have so far is justified based on my position on council. But I will tell you that I take a little offense when you put the word vacation in your statement.
That's fine with me. I did, I know I'm on about three or four different committees too, Mickey, but, uh, I just think it, you know, have you ever looked at the breakdown on your travel?
I, I see it when I turn it in. I know, I know the meetings I've been to, I've ridden with Wayne back and forth on different water issues, to Waco, to Austin, other times, so whenever that's convenient.
Council, are we all in agreeance to adjust the budget to reckon, to, uh, to show five thousand per council member? And what is the regular budget on that?
It's thirty.
Moving on to our next.
So, how will we, will there be a notification mechanism coming out of the manager's office? When you're close to three, or how's that gonna work?
I'll put it out, but I'll put it at four thousand until we can make, so to break forward.
I don't mind making them individual requests, that'd be fine. I have nothing to hide about that. And there are no vacations. Thank you very much, Tony.
You're welcome.
I keep moving. Our next item is a fire truck. And now, let me kind of brief the people with, uh, what went on with the fire truck issue. We did have a fire truck that was a, uh, different brand, I guess, and different make. But after talking to the fire department, they said both these fire trucks did the same thing. So, I, I for one, just went back and forth with this thing. And then we had a, uh, I think we had a councilperson in the budget that made a phone call and got about thirty thousand off. But like Councilman Allen said, it still left us with a forty thousand dollar higher price tag on this fire truck. And when the question was asked, what is the difference? There was none. It's a different name, different, uh, people services, but it was basically the same fire truck. So, here's forty thousand dollars that we could take and put into the insurance, or somewhere, you know, and get probably the same product here. Uh, we did go ahead and approve it at that time, but after Mr. Allen is talking about, and I think some other people have, uh, have thought this over, and wondered why would we do this? That is why this has come back to life here, about which fire truck should we purchase? The one that is cheaper, that does the same thing, as the ones that cost more? So, with that, I think most of us agreed that we would rather go ahead and purchase that particular fire truck that was the lower-priced fire truck, but would do the same thing. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Council, do you have any more discussion on that item?
Can I just clarify that whatever truck you buy, you're gonna bid out? You're not just gonna call the company first?
They've, they've already bid it.
We bid it.
Yeah.
You're gonna buy it off a buyer, or you're gonna bid it?
There was two bids, right.
Buy board.
Also, I would say that what's in the budget is the financial, and what, what, and what's being out in here. It's over ten, but here's, so, uh, the whole four three was not there.
What, what was the name of that fire truck?
Deco.
Deco.
Deco versus, what was the most, uh, huh?
No.
Uh, Metro, yeah, Metro.
So, the Deco's the one that we want?
Yeah, we voted in the, in the, uh, budget community to go with Metro. We don't have forty-two thousand, we have the financial.
Gotcha. All right.
Well, I'd like to say something.
Mr. Couch?
I was, I was the one that proposed going with, with the, uh, with the more expensive fire truck. I'm the one that made that phone call, reduced the number. Um, so, if I was under the wrong impression that this was the most desired truck, then I was mistaken. Um, I wanted to give the fire department, um, the best that we can give them. The actual, the actual cost to this was less than two hundred dollars a month over the course of the life of the truck. And I felt, you know, that it was worth, worth it. But if there's a consensus here that, um, the other truck is, is fine, then I'm fine with that too.
Okay, council, any more discussion on these items?
Uh, I too like, uh, I would like an explanation of why the sales tax is, uh, some six or seven percent more than, than what appears to be the current year. Historically, we've made our budget for sales tax based on prior year collections. And I was just wondering why we're adjusting that by. From my looking at the August, uh, financial statements, we're on a track to do about six million, two again this year. So, there's about a four hundred thousand dollar bump.
Sixty last year, three to four percent. Plus we've got, if we, we've got new, if it's coming on forward, there's, uh, 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 uh. Well, we've been, you know, the last year, we were up ten percent over the part of the, and then there's a great four percent. And we're just, you know, to make everything work that we thought we were, we're, 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 so, we're, we're. It is a protection. But if, again, during the year, like we've done before, if a projection was coming, then we'll cut that off. We've done that before, we're a manager, and we don't just put a number in there, let's, uh, we can, we've done it very well. We generated, uh, surplus now, and the reason we've done that is we've managed to purchase.
And that's why we normally group, if there's a big year, we group them up. The purchases up into the, into the latter part of the year.
Yes.
Uh, could someone explain what the, uh, two hundred and eight thousand dollars restricted reserve is in the utility fund? What are the items in that?
The two oh eight, well, if you add the two oh eight and the one percent reserve, we had agreed to put two hundred thousand dollars there back for collecting money for a hundred, or a hundred. The combination of the one percent reserve and the reserve, helps for.
Okay. So, that's not a restricted by bond, uh, covenant, or anything like that?
We're restricting it because of.
Strictly a mental, okay.
Hey, council? With that, I would go through here, and approve of the proposed fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand four, balanced budget. With adding the term insurance, uh, 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 if you say adding the term insurance, appropriate money there. Also, appropriate money for the drug, council drug testing. And also vouching out the travel expenditures to five thousand dollars per councilperson. Which we'll determine later. And also recommending the fire truck, the Deco to the fire truck.
That's the cheaper one, right, mayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions? Uh, in, in the budget, we do have, uh, money remaining for, uh, the city's water attorney and the city's hydrologist. Uh, we don't have any money budgeted for, uh, the coalition of lawyers.
Will not be added one of the reserves.
Where's the?
It might, it might hurt.
The hundred, yeah, the hundred thousand we spent is, is in this year's budget, right? So, that's out of this year's budget. So, we don't have any, uh, the city doesn't have any budget right now for, uh, those legal expenses other than, than the local city, than the city attorney and the city hydrologist. Uh, in the utility fund and in the general fund, do we have contingencies?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand each one, okay. Uh, when will the overage in the opera house hit? Is that, is that in the current year's budget, or is that in next year's budget?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in next year's budget, since it does, it's built. What would come out of fund reserve, we mentioned, we, we explained where we could get that, two point two million. The additional amount would be a bunch of net of any, any donation.
So, current, current opera house expenditures are coming out of bond funds, right?
Yeah, current right now, but we would see those bond funds, but those, remember, we had, we had different, we have an interest on bonds, thank you.
So, you had two point two that was available from that, huh?
Whenever the additional amount, so we're gonna look upon it, and then anything net that is coming out of, uh, the general fund.
Will there be any excess from, uh, in reviewing the bond fund packages today? There's quite a bit of money talking about the parking lot. Uh, do we expect any, uh, funds available from the parking lot reconstruction?
Uh, I don't know, that was not one of the items. We have it, I don't have that reconciled, it's worth it.
I think it was coming out, I thought it was coming out of bond for parking area.
Hundred and fifty thousand additional, so, yeah. What's the current opera house budget? Three and a half?
Three point four.
Looking at a million three. Million three or four, five thousand, hit to, uh, reserves next year.
Well, we're hoping that we get a million dollar donation too, on that.
But right now, we have almost five million.
How would that, uh, how would that million and a half affect our, uh, reserve ratios with the banks, or with the bondholders? Is that an, an issue for us going forward?
No, we were, we were, they're only considering the number twenty-five. In fact, they, you know, we, when we went forward, they didn't do as much credit as I was going to. Any more discussion, council?
Any more discussion, council? With that, I got a motion, do I hear a motion on the floor?
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
You got a second by Mr. Parsons? No more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That approves all three of those items there, the, uh, proposed city budget, and the ordinance providing the adoption of the fiscal year budget. And?
Mayor Pro Temp, before the officers leave, I want, let's thank them for what a great job they've done here with our city.
So, at this time, we, we're going ahead and we'll make a motion to ratificat, ratific, ratificate the property tax increase reflected in the budget. I have a motion. That's the number three item there. I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, council?
Is that, I thought that was supposed to have specific wording.
That's what I'm doing right now.
Ratification.
Where, because you're adopting the effective tax rate, you don't have to have the two public hearings. And this doesn't adopt the effective tax rate, number four does. This one is just to ratify, uh, your decision to increase tax, about last year's level to the effective tax rate.
I'm sorry, I should have cleaned that. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That property tax is approved. Moving on to number four here, is to consider and approve an ordinance adopting the tax rate for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, for the Granbury, for the city of Granbury, Texas. You are on.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. As you have mentioned, um, this agenda item is to approve the ordinance for the adoption of the tax rate. Um, at this time, we are proposing to adopt the tax rate of point three nine four five nine three, which is the effective tax rate, as, uh, calculated by the chief tax appraisal. Um, this is a lower tax rate that we currently have. So, we are moving from the three nine nine, uh, tax rate to the three nine four five nine three tax rate. Um, while our property tax, the property asset valuation have gone up thirty-one million dollars. Um, that's a three per, three percent increase. We are able to decrease the tax, tax rate to the effective tax rate. Um, the last portion of this calculation is, um, based on the current debt service of two point seven million dollars obligation in INS. We calculated the MNO tax rate to be point one five seven three eight three. And the debt service portion of the tax rate will be point three seven two ten cents. Point two three, seven two ten, yeah, I'm sorry.
Very good.
The sum of those equals the total tax rate, except it's about from debt service and from operational.
So, so we're, we're using a lower tax rate, oh, right?
Yeah, we're doing it, yeah, that, that, what he just had to do makes no sense whatsoever. Because the lower the tax rate, so ninety-five percent of the people pay less taxes. But because we have new properties coming in, the overall tax revenue generated from ample loan tax retirements, but when you generate new business, new businesses come in, they have more expenses, they use that money to pay, to control them, to provide services, but they still want us to say we've got more tax revenue. But, well, we did, but not the loan tax, but, uh, uh, uh.
The one that tells the story is the one we're talking about right now.
Lower tax rate, it's lower the tax rate.
All right. Council, any more discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, to be reduced to point, point three nine four five nine three per hundred, for a hundred dollar property valuation, with the maintenance and operation portion of the tax rate at point one five seven three eight three. And the debt service portion will be at point two three seven two ten. Do I have a mo?
So move.
I got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That tax rate is approved. Moving down to number five, we have a public hearing and consider approval regarding request of Vivian Wilson to preliminary plat a point nine nine oh acre tract of Martin's site survey abstract, abstract number five oh two, as lot one, block one of the Cheerful Heart addition. Uh, property is located at the southeast corner of intersection of East Highway three seventy-seven and East Ridge Road. Mr. Sockcheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, council, Mr. Manager. This particular piece of property is, is still currently under survey. It was annexed, it hasn't. It was annexed, it hasn't been expanded since. As part of our subdivision ordinance, it's a requirement that any building permit activity that expands the building footprint be done on a legitimately platted lot of record. If you're familiar with the site, this is the Cheerful Heart. They've done some very nice aesthetic renovations to it, but not expanded the building footprint. The proposal is to allow for a preliminary plat, which this application is, and a final plat application, which will be subsequent to be filed for record at the county courthouse to allow for a future building footprint, building footprint expansion, expansion. There are a laundry list of variances with this as well. We have a variance to 39455 and 3946 to not extend the eight inch water and sewer main respectfully. The site does have current hookups to water and sewer, it's just a fall back toward the property to the south, where there's private service lines tying into water and sewer mains. They just don't run parallel to East Ridge and, and US 377. Everything just kind of falls back. All the other adjoining properties are hooked up as well, so there's no need to continue the, the extension of water and sewer along East Ridge or US 377. Everybody's got connectivity to it. You have a memo from the office of the city engineer recommending approval of the variances as submitted. You also have a variance to 31410 to not improve 377 or East Ridge to an urban standard facility. There's also a discussion on sidewalks on 3684. We have our standard sidewalk note that's affixed to the plat once it's filed for record. If you notice on the plat itself, there's a dedication of approximately five feet along East Ridge, which is west of the property. Our subdivision ordinance requires half of the difference be dedicated for any possible public right of way expansion. The applicant has done that. As such, the city staff and the P&amp;Z recommend approval of the variances as submitted with all the notes affixed to the plat by the applicant, and approval of the preliminary plat as, as offered by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. As I must say, that is a nice looking piece of property out there. Looks nice when you drive up to it. I'll open the public meeting, the public meeting up now. Does anybody in the public like to have any discussion on this item? I will now close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any comments on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented by the applicant along with the variances 3.9 and 4.5, and also 3.9 and 4.6, and 3.1 and 4.10, and also the, the approval of 3.6A4 along the sidewalks. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, I'll move with approval of the variances.
I got a motion by Mr. Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That preliminary plat is approved. Item number six is a public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance regarding a request of Wayne Armbuster, Armbruster for, for an SUP for 510 West Bridge Street to allow for a professional general office, medical office included, in a residential 8,400 R-8.4 zoning district. The professional general office use would be secondary to the primary resident use as required by the zoning ordinance. Mr. Sockcheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. What you've mentioned is that the property located on 510 West Bridge Street is in an area that's generally mixed use. You can see the shading of the area in yellow is the adjoining single family residential district. The property that's located just to the east or the right hand side of the screen is light commercial. That's a chiropractic office. The business to the south is the rash photography studio. There's a, kind of a mixed use, it's not like an island unto itself, so it didn't appear to be a spot zoning issue. The zoning ordinance itself, as you see in your staff report, does allow for the consideration of a specific use permit for office type activity in a residential zone. It appears to be commensurate with adjoining land uses within the area. To date, we have not received any kind of notification of any adjoining property owner against this particular proposal. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the request by the applicant submitted. P&amp;Z did offer up a suggestion of a three-year term, after which it becomes null and void, and that'll basically be the, the performance term, after which it'll be reevaluated. Here's a particular picture of the site. There's the adjoining neighbor to the east, and that's across the street on Bridge Street. So you can see that the uses commensurate with the surrounding uses. Be happy to entertain any questions, should the counsel have any?
Thank you, Scott.
Scott.
Let me, let me open this up for the public hearing, Mr. Allen, and we'll get right back to you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that I can speak on this item? I do note that they said they'd have somebody to speak here for the counsel. I don't know, are you, are you out there? If the counsel has any question for him. With not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, I'll open that up for questions this time?
Like those two pictures you're showing, that is already zone commercial, you said?
The property just to the east, which is where the chiropractic office was, is zone business commercial, you're correct. And the property, you can see the entire area to the south of Bridge Street is zone light commercial.
Okay.
Counsel, any more discussion? With that said, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of the SUP with the following terms and conditions. The SUP shall be valid for a term of three years with which it will automatically expire and become null and void. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I got a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The SUP is approved. Moving on to number seven, a request of welcoming and association on behalf of 3925 Partners LTD. A, execute two public improvement agreements for the public water, sewer, storm drainages, and streetlights for lots 1-5, block one of the Kroger Marketplace addition. The total value of the public improvements are estimated at $1,645,381.39, counsel. And they are split into two phases for due to the applicant and the recent variances for, for the early permit. Phase one equals $1,588,976, and phase two equals $554,468.30. And the public hearing, the public hearing regarding the final plat of 22.07 acre tract of the WR McQuary survey abstract number 385 is lot 1-5, block one of the Kroger Marketplace addition. The property is located at 3,600 and 3,628 FM4 and 3,925 East Highway 377. As you see, counsel, we've got a, an A and a B here, and we'll probably go ahead and, and bring both of those up. Is there anybody in the public who wants to discuss this item? Now close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any concerns or questions on this item? Scott, do we have a staff report on that?
We do, Mayor Protem. Would you like me to offer one up for the counsel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is the approximate 22 some odd acres where we saw the preliminary plat for the proposed new Kroger site. You can see it's on the southeast corner, generally of FM Highway four and US 377. You can see it's bounded in yellow on your screen. We've, we've seen this application as a preliminary plat application. We saw the conceptual layout for the water, sewer, drainage improvements, the improved hard surface, the site plan. We also saw SUPs for the fuel dispensing facility, daily outdoor display that would be located around the fuels, the dispensing facility in the main store. You're correct, Mayor Protem, is, is we have two phases to this particular application. We have the first of which is the public improvement agreement. It's actually split into two phases. If you recall, the previous council meeting, the applicant came forward and got approved for an early limited permit, and that was, we saw pictures of the approved hard surface around the built footprint, as well as water lines, sewer lines, some drainage improvements, and getting that buttoned up in the first phase and then going, and some subgrade work as well, and then going vertical after that particular phase. So what this does is allow to do some vertical work after the first phase is done, while the second phase of the public improvements are being conducted to not delay the, the opening date of the particular store. So that's why you see two phases of the public improvement agreement, is because it's tied to the early limited permit that you approved at the last council meeting. The second is the final plat application. The final plat application is commensurate with the preliminary plat that you saw. We, I do want to show some elevations of the facility that we got from the architect just to show, counsel, what's being presented at this particular location. It's very presentable. Again, elevations of the store. I can tell you roughly that the square footage of this particular store is about 127, 128,000 square feet, so it's a fairly, fairly good sized store, fairly good sized commitment by the Kroger company to actually relocate their, their store over to this new site. The plat application that we see basically has, you can see the three out parcels along 377, which is denoted as lots two, three, and four respectively, fronting US 377. I can also tell you, they have conceptual approval on all their approaches that they've coordinated with TechDOT. They don't have their permits yet, but we do have correspondence from TechDOT saying that they're comfortable with the site plan and where their approaches are located. All this was deliberated at the P&amp;Z meeting, and of course, P&amp;Z doesn't deliberate and make a motion on the PIA's, but P&amp;Z does recommend approval of, of the final plat as presented, and staff is recommending execution of the two, two PIA's and approval of the final plat as submitted as well.
Scott, we're getting real close to getting this final plat done, right?
This is the final public hearing application that we will see, and then after this, it's really up to the applicant when to file the final plat for record and when to begin construction. So after this, they can file building plans at any time. They can coordinate with the property owner. I, I can tell you, I don't know if they've closed on the property or not, but after this, they certainly have six months from this date to actually go file it for record, and they can do it any day after that.
Scott, I want to, I want to, I want to recognize Scott here too. He has worked really good with this. This thing has been, it's went really smooth, and you worked really well with their people and our people in coordinating this whole thing, so it's, I think it's going to be a good piece of property down there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and also, if you don't mind, I'd like to recognize Freezer Nichols, who's in the office.
Yeah, they've done a excellent job also.
Who's our engineer, and Winkleman and Associates, who's the design engineer for Kroger, did a wonderful job, and they're a joy to work with on behalf of Kroger as well.
Thank you, folks. Counsel, do you have any discussion? Any questions for Scott?
Scott, I have two.
Mr. Allen.
Did this show any access coming off of four? Or is that what you're talking about with TechDOT? How they can exit out of there?
There are some access points on four. If memory serves me correctly, help me out, Will, are there two or three? There's three on four. And from what I understand, TechDOT has received that concept plan of where those locations are, and they're, they've issued a, a email or memorandum to the applicant saying that they're, they're comfortable with the thought of permitting those, those access points.
The other, the other question was, I'd heard today that if we approve these tonight, then, then they can't come back and want us to give them a tax placement, is that correct?
I don't believe that to be correct. I think they can, they can come back at any time, and, and this basically buttons up the development side of things. We'll still expect the building plans, but at any time prior to development, I think they still have an opportunity as, you know, and whether or not the city wants to entertain that opportunity to file a request for that kind of consideration.
Are you saying that they can come back before they start?
They could. Generally, you like to see these things before they start, before they break ground. But I would say they can come back anytime they desire to ask for an economic development incentive package. It's really their, their discretion to forward that request to the city and whether or not the city wants to entertain.
I was hoping this was over tonight, Scott.
We're just getting close, Mr. Allen. Alrighty. Counsel, any more questions for Scott? With that, I want to do these separate now. I'm going to do, the first one's going to be an approval. I'm going to entertain a motion for a public improvement agreement for phase one at a construction cost of $1,588,776, and phase two at a construction cost of $554,468.30, as presented and bonded by the applicant. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, counsel?
Mayor Protem, I got one. Then at the bottom, it says counsel only. That doesn't mean the counsel's approving to pay that, does it?
No, sir. That's a good question. I can tell you, they actually submitted a payment and performance bond to guarantee that $1.6 million worth of public improvements. That has actually been filed with the city, so they are providing the surety for that amount to guarantee that that work will be done. We don't pay that, they guarantee it, then they hire a contractor and go out and pay for it themselves.
They already put the bond up.
They're going to bond up, and actually, while we hold the surety, the guarantee, they go out and pay the contractor. So there's, there's, should be no, there is no out of pocket expense for the city. If they default, we basically cash the bond and finish the work.
We already got the check, right?
We have a payment and performance bond, which is the surety that's required under the subdivision ordinance.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Any more questions, counsel? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That public improvement is approved. Moving down to the next one, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the final plat as presented by the applicant. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, that was weak. All opposed, say nay. That one is approved. We're going to move on to item number eight here. I see Bill out there just itching to come on up to the microphone and speak right into the mic. How am I doing, Dee? Oh, Wayne does too, okay.
Here, Wayne.
Our next item is discuss the status of the Opera House development project and consider and approve any recommendations from the Opera House redevelopment committee. Mr. Bill Scott?
Good evening. We report on progress for the Opera House.
Okay.
Moving right along. We're not finished with roofing, but getting pretty close to it. We're trying to get dried in, going into the month of October is our goal. We're, we set our air conditioning units on top of the building. We're coming right along in all areas. We had some activity today with the structural engineer giving a brief walkthrough of the job. Very pleased with what he saw, and everything seems to be for the most, right on like he drew it. We're, we're ahead of schedule in a couple of areas. We're right on schedule in a couple of areas. We're right on budget in a couple of areas, and we're right under budget on a couple of areas. Got a little pluses and minuses throughout. The net effect is, we're, feel good about where we are, and hope to shoot, shooting to bring it in a little early if we can, so keep our fingers crossed and our nose to the grindstone and hope things, hopefully make things go well. Had some activity today on the, also with the chandeliers. There's some, some work going on and selections, et cetera, of those, and hope to present those to the subcommittee soon. Andrew and the interior decorator were picking some fixtures, but there's been some movement on that, and it's all looking good out there. If I can answer any questions.
Hey, Bill, we had, have we had any access or anything out there on the site?
No, sir.
That's great. That is good. That is excellent, because when you look at what they're doing out there, climbing all around and stuff, so you, you, you must be doing something right out there, because that's, that's great.
We're, well, we're... We're, well, we're talking about it every day.
Yeah, that's what you do. You know, when I go out there, it's a really safe operation and what you're doing out there, so I commend you on that.
We've got to keep it up and get finished with this job and turn it over and hope to do show.
We're ready to put you in the first show.
Sure.
We're ready to put you in the first show, bud.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Do you have an idea when those staircases are going to be framed?
Well, they should, yeah, I appreciate your question, and they should have been started now. Our stair guy that's a real pro at laying out radius stairs is busy on a fancy one in Dallas, so we're swapping the layout with another firm and trying to fall back with some of the carpentry work that was with the first guys, so we're trying to get started with that. Likewise, with the mason, we've got some things to get out there and get going. I would tell you, I don't know an exact date when the, of those radius stairs will be 100% framed within the next three weeks, easy. Keep pushing.
Is there still some steel work to do inside with the, like, are we doing any steel staircases or anything like that that has to come inside?
No, sir. The miscellaneous iron that are inside the theater proppers have all already been installed, installed, inspected, and we've already got a lot of wood on top of it. We need permanent power in an elevator and a dried-in building.
Counsel, any more questions for Bill?
I got one, Mayor Protem. I don't know what it costs, but the picture y'all got in the front up there looks nice. It shows what it looks like. The mural you got in the front. I've had, a few citizens said they walked by and looked at it and really liked it.
You pat yourself on the back, that's the city doing that.
Huh? We spent money?
The city put those.
They come out of your budget, didn't it, Bill?
Well, the drawing of it did, yeah.
No, I'm serious. I've had a lot of citizens, not a lot, but a few said, "Hey, I really like it. Looks like it's going to be beautiful."
It's first-class what you guys are going.
Don't let me down, Bill. I'm telling everybody to toss my hog, okay?
Don't worry, we won't.
Looks great.
Whenever the city council actually walked through about two weeks ago, we located some changes to the concession stand on the second floor.
Yes, sir.
You're implementing those, right?
Yes, sir. Well, we're after our architect to redraft that to show some things that we want to run past everybody to make sure that, hey, this is what we think we heard. Do you agree with it? It's a great idea, and we're waiting on a guy to get off a computer with it and print something, so we hope to have that yesterday, too.
Thank you, Bill. Any more discussions, any more questions for Bill? Okay, counsel? With, this was just a discussion item. I will now declare the Granbury City Council is convened into open session and that all members are present except for Mayor Ricky Pratt. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551-01071, consultation with the attorney, and Section 551.074 personnel. Counsel will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Do we have a motion by Mr. Parsons?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion that we approve the extending of the city manager's contract to January 30, 15, and the contract to be finalized and work on with the attorney and be finalized at our next meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Parsons and a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that matter, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That contract will be approved. If there is no further discussion by the council, this council is adjourned.